Yeah, in accordance with section five of the Open Public Meeting Act.
No, it might be you.
In accordance with section five of the, is that better?
That's better.
Okay. It's Joe's. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advisor noticed that this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board at Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, December 6th at 7:00 PM via Zoom webinar. Craig Plutner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Eileen, I see her and Sean Drew as panelists. They somehow got booted, it looks like.
I brought Jody back over. For some reason, I've brought Sean Drew over three times and it's just not... Okay, he's coming over now. Got it. Okay. Jody Sharma? Jody?
You're muted.
Joyce Siegel?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Sean Drew Harjani?
I'm here. Just trying to get my screen on. Thank you.
Jody Sharma can hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, you're here. Vice Chairman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Yep, I'm muted.
You're muted.
Still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're here?
I'm here.
Yeah, you're gonna have to mute yourself if you're not talking because you're getting feedback from your end.
I don't know what's happening here.
There's a TV on in the background too, Joe.
Pardon me? It's not mine. It's not mine. I have nothing in the background.
Could it maybe be coming from a different room in your house?
There is a TV on in a different room.
We're able to hear, yeah, we're able to hear it from, from the other room.
That's wild.
Yeah. So if you can't turn it off, then maybe just mute yourself unless you're speaking.
But I'm muting you now.
Okay, we have minutes for approval?
Can you tell us who was at that meeting, Eileen?
Unfortunately, I cannot. Everyone was there.
Is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
Motion to adopt?
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, in favor, these are the minutes of October the 4th, 2021. Who are in favor?
Hi.
I can only see four people here.
Everyone's hand was raised, indicating approval of the minutes from October 4th.
All right, let's start with the minutes of October 18th.
I do not have them. I did not circulate them.
You didn't circulate them, all right.
They're not running.
We're gonna go next to memorializations.
Okay, so can I, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, there are a number of memorializations on the agenda for this evening. We're gonna handle them one by one for consideration and vote. So we're clear, three of the memorializations is stated on the agenda. Boydman, Ama Sharma, and Rosenstein will be considered not this evening, but on December 20th. So the rest, we have eight others, and those others will be considered one by one.
All right.
Which ones are we not doing tonight?
We're not doing Boydman, 381521. We're not doing Ama Sharma, which is 381821. And we're not doing Rosenstein, which is 3824-21. We're doing all the rest of them.
I only have four more besides those three.
No, we have, we have a total of eight resolutions that are on for tonight.
Yes.
Per, per the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. Well, the first one that I have is Ochsenhorn.
Yes.
Correct.
Calendar 3806-21. 304 Milburn Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt that memorializing resolution?
Move approval of calendar 380621.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eileen, is there anyone who's, Eileen, for each one of these, could you identify if we know, you know, who, anyone who's not eligible to vote?
The only that cannot vote are Craig, Jody, and Sean Drew. So Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
And the next one I have is AHS Hospital Corp. This is calendar 3812-21, 284 Milburn Avenue in Milburn.
Same people are eligible.
Is there a motion on this one?
Approval of the memorialization for calendar 3812-21.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll second it.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, Boydman, Sharma, and Rosenstein are the next ones on my list, and those are the three we're not doing tonight. Is that correct?
Right.
That's, that's correct. We're moving on to Garber.
I don't have that one. Will somebody announce that? Jessica, please.
Sure, I just have to pull that up. Give me one second.
What is this?
Move approval calendar 382621. Garber?
Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Craig.
Great, okay. Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now, the next one?
Do you have Volpachelli?
Joe? There's Volpachelli, calendar 3827.
I don't have that one.
Does anyone want to make a motion for Volpachelli?
Move adoption of calendar 382721 Nicholas Volpachelli.
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. And what's the next one on the list?
The next one is calendar 3828. That's 86 Pine Street. Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
Motion to adopt.
Who was that? Craig?
Craig.
Now, I believe Steve and Joe voted no on two of the, so they cannot vote on the resolution.
Jessica, do you have a second on that?
I don't have a second. Would someone like to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joy. Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel? Steve?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
And what's the next one you have, Jessica?
The next, the next one is calendar 3829. That's Cochran on 445 Wyoming Avenue.
Motion to deny.
I was just gonna say, Eileen, this is a motion to deny, right?
Yep.
Yes. Is there a motion to deny on this?
Well, yeah, we're approving.
They're approving.
You're adopting the resolution of denial.
Right.
Eileen, do you want to remind, I don't know if everyone remembers what they voted on this. Do you want to remind us?
Everyone voted to deny it.
Okay. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Motion to adopt calendar 382921, 445 Wyoming.
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The next one is John and Marty Bello at 49 Grosvenor Road. That's calendar 3830-21. Who's eligible on this one, Eileen?
Eligible on this are Craig, Jody, Wolfgang, Jessica, and Joe.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there a motion to approve the memorialization?
Move approval calendar 3830.
Second. Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. And the last one is calendar 3832-21, David Jacobs and Tammy Wang at 52 Linden Street in Milburn. Who's eligible to vote on this one, Eileen?
Craig, Jody, Steve, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, Amy.
Of those people, is there some, someone who wants to make a motion on this one?
Move approval of memorialization for calendar number 3832-21.
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, now, just so there's no confusion here, I'm gonna make an announcement that there are two cases tonight, and I'm gonna mention them right now. Calendar 3834-21, which is 37 Kane Road. Applicant is Jacqueline Stein. That case is being carried to January 24th.
No.
No.
January 10th for giving a date only for when that case will be heard. And the same is true for calendar 3800-21. Property location is 437 and 439 Milburn Avenue. The applicant is the Chi Center. That case will also be carried to the 10th of January for an announcement at that time as to when that case will be heard.
So, so just for purposes of clarification for the public, that both the Stein application and the Chi Center application will not be heard this evening, but rather will be carried for scheduling only to the January 10th, 2022, meeting of the board. What that means is that neither application will be heard on January 10th, but rather at the January 10th hearing. The board will announce a new date when that, each one of those applications will be heard. And significantly, for both the Stein application and the Chi Center application, no further notice will be provided by the applicant. So you need to, if you are listening in or watching and have an interest in either the Stein application or the Chi Center application, the suggestion is to tune in again on January 10th, 2022, at which time the board will announce the new hearing dates for both of those applications. And Eileen, we have extensions of time for both, from both applicants. Thank you.
Okay, the one case that will be heard tonight is calendar 3835-21, 3835-21. 14 Clermont Drive. The applicant is Eden Kai. And will the applicant come forward, please? And any witnesses that the applicant has?
So I have a.
Wait, wait, wait. Hey, Joe, could you please mute? It's very hard to hear a little feedback coming from your speaker.
Let me, let me see if I can mute.
Bottom left.
I know where it is. I guess it's not happening.
Perfect. Feedback's gone.
Great. So Ms. Kai, as, as the applicant, have you, do you have any professional witnesses or fact witnesses with you as part of this application?
I do not have any professional witness, but I do have a few neighbors come here, want to talk about the patio as well.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get to them in a moment. Eric, do you want to swear in, Ms. Kai?
If you, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Ms. Kai, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Eden Kai, 14 Clermont Drive, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Kai, as the chairman is getting settled, why don't you tell us a little bit about the application and what you're asking for from the board?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Seema. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman and zoning board members, my name is Eden Kai, and I live in Short Hills for almost seven years with my husband and the two children now. I live in the Glenwood section. First, I want to thank you all for your service and your time here tonight to hear my case. And then I will give you a brief background about this patio. Also, with your permission, I hope to show you a short video produced by children in the neighborhood about this, on this patio. So I live in Glenwood section, Old Street. There are many, many young children. Since pandemic, the children on the street have been played lot outside on the street, which I, sometimes I don't feel safe for them. So I thought it would be nice to have a patio in the backyard for all the children to enjoy. Early spring, I applied for patio permit, 12 feet by 16 feet, and I hired a construction team. Shortly after, I went on a business trip for a week. So when I came back, I'm surprised to find out my construction team already built the foundation, which is much bigger than my original design. Because the patio team, during the implementation, they thought a bigger patio may better suit my backyard. So the patio was built in late spring. Since the patio was built, it actually served nicely as outdoor place for children's concert and gameplays, and it created many memories for the neighbors. And I want to show you a video about it. So I believe this patio actually benefit the community and it brought the neighbors together. Now I understand this patio is not conforming with current township zoning code, and I truly apologize for lacking of the zoning knowledge and the lack of supervision. So here, I'm seeking your advice and approval for the setback and the exceeding coverage variance. Right now, we implemented, we're generous landscaping in the, in our backyard. So we include, we installed fences for the back and both sides. Also, we planted 17 tall green giant trees. The patio is invisible from the street. We also met and discussed with engineer firm, so to address potential stormwater runoff issue, a surface under, underground, a subsurface water management system can be installed. So with the zoning board and then the township engineering department's approval, we are happy to implement such a system if needed. So that's the basic background about the patio. And I know, I really thank you for a few of you to come to my backyard yesterday and today, you looked at the patio. But I still have a small film want to show, so I don't know if it's possible.
Ms. Kai, did you submit this film to Ms. Davin in advance of the hearing?
Not, I submit some pictures, but not a film because I'm not sure how to best to submit the film.
Okay, is it your, is it your, hold on, is it your intention to screen share so that the board and the public can see the film? Hold on a second. So what we're gonna do is, and did you take the film?
My children.
Your children took the film?
Right.
And when did your children take the film?
In summer, in the summer.
In the summer?
Right.
And this is, is this film intended to show the patio?
Yes, it's a summer concert. They had, they get together on the patio, so.
All right, but what, the question is this, what is the benefit of showing the film other than to see a concert? Are you, we understand that according to your testimony and the information that you provided in the application, that the patio for which you were seeking approval for is used by children, yours and other children in the neighborhood for play, play area and for music and for performance. We understand that. So is there anything that the video that you want to show is going to demonstrate for the board in terms of what you need to prove for variance relief? That is not, that you haven't stated already, or that is not already in the application materials?
You're correct. That's just show a one-minute small film about children playing and having concert on the patio.
So, Mr. Chairman, unless there's, you know, any desire for any board member or members to view the video, it doesn't seem that it would necessarily be relevant to the proofs that are required for the positive and negative criteria for, for the variance relief, but I leave it up to the board. Joe, you're on mute.
The, the video is one minute in length?
Right.
I don't see how use of a patio would speak to the positive or negative criteria.
I agree.
Joe, you need to unmute.
Joe, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would agree that there's no use, useful purpose that would be advanced by showing the video or the movie.
Okay.
I think we know what the proofs are that the applicant is gonna have to come forward with. And I, I'd be happy to take a vote of the board to see how many people really want to see this film.
Does any, maybe by a show of hands, since everybody is muted, whether, is there anyone who feels the need to review the video? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't seem like that there's any board members who feel that the, that the video will provide any information that is relevant to the proofs that are required before this board for the variance relief that's requested.
Thank you.
You're on mute again. Joe, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Okay, now, there's something obviously wrong with my screen here, but you can hear me now, correct?
Correct.
All right, since no one on the board has deemed it fit to permit the applicant to go forward with the video or the movie, the applicant should proceed to give whatever other testimony or produce any other witnesses that the applicant has to prove to the board by these side yard setback variance, the back setback variance, and the maximum accessory use coverage variance that should be granted. I'll address the applicant. Do you have any other witnesses?
Can we question the applicant?
I would like to question the applicant only to the effect that I would like to ask if she has any other testimony of hers or any other witnesses that she would like to produce.
So I have few neighbors, they can testify, you know, how children was able to enjoying the patio, as well as other neighbors. Should I, they were asking if they could come in to talk?
Okay, so, so maybe if they're fact witnesses, and you want to introduce them as fact witness, that is fine, but maybe to Mr. Togar's point, before we go to any additional witnesses, Mr. Chairman, I suggest maybe we open it up to questions from the board members.
I think that's a good idea. Are there any questions from board members?
Mr. Togar?
So Mrs. Chau, you mentioned something about a water drainage I mean, you can match flow of property, something that you would be looking to install.
Joe, could you, Joe, could you mute, please?
Can you still hear the background?
Yeah, you're getting a ton of feedback through your mic.
And I, I can't hear it at all. I closed the door.
Perfect. Perfect.
I'm sorry, could you provide further testimony as to what kind of water management system you have looked at? And who you've spoken to about that, just as, as much detail on that as you can provide would be appreciated, please.
Sure, thank you. So we, I don't know if you see here, so we spoke, I spoke with Kason Kelly and they designed sort of a underground subsurface water management system here. It can potentially to address the storm water runoff issue. But I have my neighbors coming, which they, you know, right next to me, they, they haven't seen any water issue, but I just say if, in case there is any issue, this should be able to take care of it.
So are you saying that you would be willing to implement the storm water management system as a condition of having this variance approved?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I just want to remind you that because of the size of, of this, she would be required to go to the engineering department and apply for a grading permit regardless. So it would have to be according to their, it would be required anyway.
Okay, and, okay, thank you.
I, I have a question, I, I'd like to understand more about, to be clear about the documents we're looking at and the history of how we got to where we are. So that the documents, I guess the summary of variance requested and the other documents, they're dated August twentieth, twenty twenty one. So have these doc, were the, it's just not clear, were these submitted previously? Or have these been, this case been pending since August and we haven't looked at it? It's not clear to me how we got to here and, and how, there, there was also mention of, you know, you were going to build the patio that was smaller. Was that patio as of right and then something else happened?
Eileen, why don't you, why don't you bring us up to speed here quick?
Yeah. The, the applicant applied for a permit to put a patio, a small patio. And if you look at your package, you'll see a survey that shows, I think, a sixteen by, a twelve by sixteen patio.
Right.
Okay. Off the back of her deck, that's what she got a permit for.
And did not need a variance, right?
She denied, that's patio, yeah, setbacks and that's the coverage is, so it was as of right. And then unfortunately, she didn't build what the permit was issued for. We received, we received a concern from a neighbor and we went out to investigate and realized that she built a much larger patio. And so the denial letter I wrote was based on, I made them give me an updated survey, show me exactly what was built, which they did. And I, you know, I told her she would either have to remove the patio and put it back to whatever she got the permit for or try to seek variance relief. So she opted to seek variance.
Got it, so the letter from you is dated August tenth, if, if that's the right letter. And then the rest of these documents are dated August twentieth. So this is what was submitted after you sent your letter? That, that even though it says existing and proposed, it's actually what's there now?
Well, the, my August tenth was my denial letter. Before that, I think there's a letter in here from June twenty ninth is when I informed her that the patio that she built was not the patio that she got a permit for. So when they finally did submit documentation to me, it was sometime in late July or early August. And that's when I did the denial letter, when I had the accurate information.
Okay, but the, but what we're looking at is really, these are documents showing what's there? Like there's an existing variance, the extent of variance, no?
No, that they, the patio, there's two surveys, the first one shows.
Not, sorry, not the survey, this, I'm looking at the summary of the very, this document.
Those are all variances that were created from by building the non-conforming patio.
Right, that exists now, okay, and it was submitted in August and this has just been, okay, yeah, I got it.
I mean, can I, can I ask a question of you?
Yes.
The original patio that was approved that didn't need variance is sixteen by twelve?
Yes.
That's like under two hundred square feet, right?
Yeah.
And so what's the total area of the new patio? Is it seems to be like seven hundred and forty-four square feet?
The new patio. A total, it's probably over, the deck is two hundred square feet, the patio plus the total, it's about seven hundred and forty square feet.
With, with the deck was there.
The deck is there, the deck is not.
Okay, so right, the new part is about seven hundred and forty-four compared to a hundred and ninety-two, that's a really big difference, right? It's not like it was a mistake.
There was a patio beside already there.
I'm sorry?
The new deck is twenty-one by my calculation.
Wait, wait, Steve, I'm sorry, we can't, we're having. Hold, hold on a second, I'd like everyone to mute. What I'd like to do, Steve, can you speak a little clearer because it was choppy?
Joe, you have to mute, it's whenever Joe's on.
Sorry, there, there was an, an existing patio, the smaller patio was already there with the deck. The new patio that was supposed to be sixteen by twelve feet is actually twenty-one by twenty-three feet by my calculation, or four hundred and eighty-three square feet compared to the hundred and ninety-two square feet that was approved for a permit or, you know, two point five times larger than it's supposed to be. That was my calculation.
The survey that was submitted initially did not show any patio, showed only a deck. All of that patio was new. The survey that was submitted for the initial patio showed only a deck on the property, no other patios.
So, so you're saying that.
Go ahead, Wolfgang.
I was gonna ask, so the original survey did not show the twelve by sixteen patio either?
It only showed the twelve by sixteen patio, that's what they applied for, it didn't show any other patio on the property.
Yeah.
Deck, it originally showed the deck plus patio and now it's showing.
And the deck was already there.
So was this, was this new patio ever approved by the town, was it inspected? The twelve by sixteen patio?
Twelve by sixteen patio, according to the records, was inspected.
So the twelve by sixteen patio is inspected. So Ms. Kai, how did this patio get inspected at twelve by sixteen and then all of a sudden magically become the size that it is?
So I, the foundation was built, it was there, so it just got passed the inspection. So I guess they did not pay much attention on the size.
So you had no intention of actually living up to the permit that you were issued?
I gave the design to the guy and then left off on business trip and then come back and it's much bigger. And I said, what happened? He said, well, I didn't look at your design, it just looks better. I said, what, what am I supposed to do?
He just arbitrarily decided to two and a half times the size of the patio.
If the inspection, he said, if inspection, I said, what, I have to go through inspection, what should I do? And he said, if the inspection come back, it's not cool, then we just, I just rebuild another one for you. So I said, okay, the inspection pool, that's why I did not think too much about it. I didn't know much about zoning thing, you know, I thought this is a process.
Let me just, let me just start over, so, so you had this patio built, the twelve by sixteen patio, it was inspected by the town?
Right.
And then once it was inspected, your contractor then came back and decided to double the size of the patio, is that correct?
No, he, he already had that patio built at that time, what, only the frame, not the whole thing. At that time, when the patio was inspected, was the frame was building, the foundation building.
Is that true, Eileen?
I, I think Craig, what he, what she's saying is that when the inspect, according to Ms. Kai's sworn testimony, that when the inspect, by the way, Ms. Kai, when you were, were you there when the inspector came out to inspect?
No.
So according to Ms. Kai's testimony, the inspect, when the inspector came out with regard to the twelve by sixteen patio, that what, a foundation was already in place or it was framed for something much bigger?
Right.
Eileen?
You know, I, like I said, I, I issued the permit for the twelve by sixteen. When this call, when the call came in that there was a patio being built on the property line, you know, we went out and looked, I sent one of the building inspector back out because it showed that an inspection was done. And he said, when he got back out there, he said, I did not look at this. He, you know, he said, I inspected a twelve by sixteen patio. Obviously, the size would have been a tart, you know, it would have, it's not even close to twelve by sixteen, so I think he would have known.
I think, I think what we, is two separate patios. Because when I looked at the property on Sunday, there's a, looks like a twelve by sixteen patio that's beside the deck and then there's a much larger patio in front of the deck.
Nope. No, neither one of those patios are even remotely close to what was proposed.
Okay.
The, the original twelve by sixteen patio, if you look at the, at, you look at the documents, conformed. It had the proper setbacks and everything. The lower patio that you're talking about, Steve, that doesn't conform, that's three feet off the property line.
Right, the lower patio does not, but I thought that the upper patio did.
No, the upper patio is not even on the drawings.
Okay, okay.
So getting back to my questioning, Ms. Kai, so even when the original twelve by sixteen patio was put down and then your, your contractor so generously decided to expand this patio, at what point did you say to him, we can't do that?
I, because it passed inspection, so I didn't know, so he just.
The patio did pass inspection, but at what point did you say, okay, well, I got the twelve by sixteen patio that I submitted for? When did you say it's okay to keep building?
Oh, no, I, I got the drawing, I sent to him, right, give to him, this is the patio I want to build. And then I left, but when I came back, the foundation is already built. So I told him, I mean, this is not what I designed it for. And he was like, well, this is probably better for your, for your, for your backyard. And I said, what, but what about the inspection? He said, well, let's say if inspection passed, then you can, if they don't pass, then we'll just go back. And the inspection passed, that's why.
So he's basically trying to deceive the building department?
Well, he said, if the inspection passed, then you're fine, I'm not sure, so.
But he didn't count on your neighbor calling you, calling up and diming you out, I mean, that's what he didn't count on.
Yeah, but I have neighbors to support, I mean, it was just misunderstanding between the neighbors. One of my neighbor.
Well, that, that, that's all well and good, but, but my concern is the fact that you applied for one factor, it's something very different.
Let's, let's not, let's not comment on the matter at this point. Only questions to the applicant.
I have, I have a question, I guess.
Yes.
In terms of lot of coverage, it's, what is proposed is awfully close to what's allowed, it's forty-four point nine five, where forty-five is allowed. Who did the calculations, is it Eileen or did you do the calculations?
Usually what happens is they do the calculations and I'll just go back and make sure that we are in agreement.
And it's, that's what it kind of came down to, awfully close, right?
Yeah.
I just had a clarifying question as well, maybe Eileen, you can answer this. Between the two visits done by the inspector, one when he was actually going to check twelve by sixteen and he said it was conforming, and the second visit after the neighbor complained and, you know, kind of, you know, kind of brought it to your attention.
He didn't go back out. No, he didn't go back out to do an inspection, I asked him to go back out because I received the complaint and I wanted him to go back out and look at exactly what was there. But he didn't go out to inspect that, he just went out to see what was there versus what he inspected the first time around.
And roughly, what was the time gap between the two events?
Um.
Like a month, a week, I mean, what, what have we talked?
I sent the letter out in. I don't really know, it may have been like two, two months, maybe, it was not a very, it wasn't a long time because I think the patio permit had only been issued in like April or May, it was a rather recent installation.
Got you.
I'm not a hundred, I don't have the building permit documents.
I have, I, I have one more question of the applicant. When we say, because I heard different people say different things, when we say the foundation was built, does that mean like there was framing? Or does that, like what was actually, or was there cement? What was actually there when you came back from the trip?
Oh, yeah, it's just a frame, nothing.
Like a wooden frame?
It's called form, you mean, for concrete, they have to create a form.
Okay, like for concrete, yeah, okay, thanks, thanks.
I, it's just, it's not built yet at that time, so I can't understand, inspector probably did not say it. Which I didn't say it, I just, just, you know, I have not much knowledge about how to build a patio.
Are there any other questions for this witness? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question for the witness? Only questions now, not statements. Eileen, do you see any?
There are none.
All right, now I'm gonna suggest that the next step should be statements from people in the audience.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before we, before we get to that, Ms. Kai has represented that she has some fact witnesses that want to.
Yeah, really, witnesses?
Joe, you're muted.
I understood that what she had were neighbors that were gonna speak on her behalf, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
I, I would consider those for surfaces of the record to be her fact witnesses as opposed to just opening it up to the public, but it's up to the board.
How many people on the board think that these are fact witnesses as opposed to neighbors speaking out on what they on, on their feelings toward the application?
These are neighbors making comments.
Well, what, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're gonna be, we don't, we don't really know anything.
Well, guys, let me, let me explain, there's, there's a difference between an applicant saying, I have certain witnesses that I want to present, right? I don't know if this, if Ms. Kai has prepped them, have had discussions with them as part of the application. So I would recommend to you that they be considered as fact witnesses. If they end up making opinions as neighbors, so be it. But I don't know what communications have taken place between Ms. Kai and these neighbors as opposed to just opening it up generally to the public for, for comments. So I would recommend, and it really form over substance, but nevertheless, I would, I would recommend that they be considered as fact witnesses and have Ms. Kai present them.
Okay.
Fine, let's, let's assume the third fact witnesses. Ms. Kai, who's the first one who you want to present?
Let's see if he, he has logged in.
You need a name?
Let's see. Amit.
Okay.
Amit. Let's move the witness.
I don't, I don't see the witness, but.
I don't see them.
I see now, okay.
Hi.
Wait, wait, sir.
Can everyone ready?
Yeah. Joe, you gotta mute yourself.
Joe, you have to mute yourself, you, you have a lot of background noise, thank you.
Sir, if you would just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold true, done by the truth?
I do.
If you would just state your name, first and last name, spelling it and your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Amit Mahale.
Spell, spell your last name.
M A H A L E. And I reside at sixteen Clermont Drive in Short Hills.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Kai, this is your witness.
So. I mean, that's right next to me, so, Amit, do you want to comment? He probably has the largest impact from this patio, right?
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, fair enough. So again, I just want to highlight that I'm obviously no expert in any engineering matters on, on any of this stuff. Radio folks are, are the. Right, you folks are, are the experts there, but I, as Mrs. Kai said, I, I'm her next door neighbor, uh, right next door, and, uh, I'm obviously supportive of the, the patio variance application with Mrs. Kai. Uh, I mean, she mentioned the whole notion of, uh, the patio being kind of opened up for, for culture, but I'll kind of leave that aside because we cannot tackle that at the beginning. Uh, my observation essentially is that my home, which is right adjacent to Mrs. Kai's, is actually low lying, uh, lower, basically, my backyard is lower than hers. Uh, I've moved here for the, I've, I've been living here for the past about four years now. Uh, and this obviously because of the, my, the fact that my house is lower than hers, this typically can have some water flowing from that yard into mine. Uh, I will definitely attest that since the building of the patio, I've not seen any increase or any changes to the amount or the pattern of water flowing in, uh, into my, into my backyard. So that was going to be one of the things that I wanted to kind of, uh, put it out there, that I've, I've not seen any changes to the pattern personally. Uh, but as I said, I'm kind of no expert in any of, of these engineering matters, uh, and my next point was mainly around the fact that, uh, Ms. Kai and her family has been very open and welcoming about, uh, letting the neighborhood kind of use, make use instead of multiple cultural events and stuff like that, so I've personally felt that the neighborhoods kind of benefited from there being events and kids kind of collaborating for events outdoors rather than feeling trapped in this pandemic times indoors and stuck to their digital devices throughout, so I mean, for these couple of reasons, I kind of feel, uh, that I, I support Mrs. Eden's patio variance because it's not had any, any materialistic impact to, to, to my backyard at least. That's mainly it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for this witness from board members?
I have a question. You, you talk about, yeah, you talk about cultural events, could you just, um, tell us like what kind of cultural events?
Yeah, like for example, one of the events that we've had is for, uh, like Mother's Day, right, Mrs. Kai, uh, and with her two kids quickly put together an event where, uh, uh, in a very inclusive manner, then, uh, multiple kids, including my two kids, uh, kind of worked on putting together like a show where all the parents attended, uh, the kids, uh, did things, like my kid, uh, played the piano, some other kid played the guitar, kids danced, kids sung, uh, just kind of in this challenging environment with the things going around, uh, kind of felt that, uh, the family was very welcoming, right, and kind of almost thought of the patio as like a neighborhood get together rather than just being for them and their own family, so my, my kids kind of go and freely play along with a lot of the kids in the, in the neighborhood. Does that help answer the question?
But could you, could you offer any testimony as to why a patio over just, you know, a backyard lawn, wh- what the significance of the patio was?
Yeah, um, I mean, this clearly the, the backyard, Mrs. Kai's backyard has, has been transformed post the patio. Uh, I, before the patio was built, I personally have, had not seen, uh, a lot of kids there in the neighbor, in the, in, in the backyard of Mrs. Kai's. Uh, I think since it's a very sturdy, well-built structure, I think that's just kind of facilitated kids and, and kind of created like a more open and welcoming, uh, area for the kids to kind of, uh, get together and, and do things, right? So even beyond the, uh, the planned and organized events, I, I do see kids freely going and playing there all the time, and this is kids ranging from like three years old all the way up to like twelve, thirteen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Next witness.
Okay, next witness.
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, at the end that we'll do, I'm going to suggest that when Ms. Kay is done with all of her witnesses, that we would open them up to not only questions from the public, but also questions from the, I'm sorry, not only questions from the board, but questions from the public. Should the public have any questions?
I, I think it's better if we go witness by witness as far as the board is concerned, then we'll ask for questions from the public. Next witness.
Uh, Sahana, Sahana Rao.
I'm sorry, did you?
Sahana.
Sahana.
Hello?
Hello, um, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold true, done by the truth?
I do.
Your name, spelling your name and your address, please.
My first name is Sahana, S A H A N A, and my last name is Rao, R A O. And I live, uh, in, uh, and my address is twenty-two Canterbury Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Okay, Ms. Kai, do you want to, uh, ask the witness any questions or have her make a statement?
Sahana, would you like to say a few words about the patio?
Yes, definitely, uh, it's all positive, um, as, uh, the address, by the address, you should know that, uh, we are in a parallel lane, uh, we're not on the same street as, uh, Ms. Kai. Um, but, uh, as Amit earlier mentioned, we had a bubble during, uh, the COVID and it's still going on. And all our kids used to play on the street and, uh, it, at some point, it was turning out to be dangerous and things like that. And Ms. Kai happily, heartfully opened up her backyard and, uh, include, I have two kids, uh, twelve, eleven and, uh, seven and a half, both of them are in their backyard playing board games or, you know, uh, drawing, painting, uh, and in that cultural event which Amit mentioned, the one who played guitar was my son. And my daughter was, uh, one with, who organized, uh, that event, so, um, I, 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 I'm, I'm no expert, uh, in all these stormwater drains or, you know, the bylaws or any such thing. I'm just a witness or a user of that, uh, patio that is under question, and, uh, personally I have benefited from that, um, size of patio. Uh, my kids are in their backyard, their kids are in our backyard, and, uh, and it's, uh, it's, uh, if, if for Mother's Day, I was there myself. And, uh, it was, we were able to accommodate, uh, around six to eight families there, uh, maintaining social distance and, uh, enjoy the, you know, the warmth of the neighborhood, that is what we need at this time with the young children and with this COVID and not being able to go anywhere, um, that, that kind of gave us a platform, uh, to bond and, uh, cross, cross culture, you know, Ms. Kai, uh, is from a different background, I'm from a different, uh, country. Uh, there are many neighbors who are from many other countries, so it's complete diversity, yet we all bonded. So, and, uh, Ms. Kai's, uh, backyard and the patio gave us a platform to bond, so I find it very positive. And, um, I have, uh, I would really, uh, request the board to let that be as it is, so that we can all benefit from it. That's all, thank you.
Joe, you're muted, you're muted, Joe.
Are there any board members who have questions of this witness? Next witness. Ms. Kai, do you have any other witnesses?
Yes, I do.
Next witness, please.
Uh, next, uh, Jemmy Zhou.
Hello?
Yeah, hi, just, uh, raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold true, done by the truth?
Yes.
State your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, my name is Jemmy Zhou, first name J I A N M I N, last name Z O U. I'm living in, uh, fifteen Clermont Drive, Short Hills.
Thank you.
Yes, so, uh, I think I would just rephrase about what Amit said.
Wait, wait, Mr. Mr.
Oh, sorry.
You need to show camera, thank you.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Sorry, I just want to rephrase what Amit said, you know, for the patio is really benefits for the commu- community. For our street is, uh, is very popular, not, in our street we have many kids, but not only in our street, many other street kids are actually coming to our side to play, just because, you know, here we have good neighbors and then, uh, and also we organize many different events, and actually many different events actually is organized by, uh, Eden, and then e- e- using Eden's, uh, properties. Okay, for example, they already mentioned the Mother's Day event, and also we have ice cream social, so it's also using Eden's, uh, patio to do the event. And then we also organize a several, uh, Chinese festivals, and then all of them just are using, uh, Eden's property, and then we really appreciate that. And then we feel like, you know, the patio is actually is really benefits for us, especially for kids. We don't want the kid to stay at home, so we really want them just go outside to play with another kids, and then for Eden's backyard, it's just like, right now actually is, is pretty big and they're pretty safe, so a lot of kids just like going back, going to her backyard and to play, so we also feel safe, we can, so we really want just like, uh, you know, your board can just like, let's just keep it, it is, so it's definitely can benefits the whole community. Yeah, that is what I want to say.
So I, I need, I apologize for berating this, but I'm, I'm really struggling to understand. I appreciate the fact that you have a neighbor who's very organized and committed to bringing family together, but what do you need the patio for? You could do it on a lawn just as easily and maybe even safer, right? It's what, I don't understand why the patio is the catalyst for these events, can you help me understand that?
Uh, first of all, we definitely don't want the kids just to play during the street, on the street, right? So it's need.
Patio is in the backyard, you can have just a plain backyard. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, continue.
Yes, and that's a patio right now actually is pretty open space, and then, uh, what, from what I, uh, I understand your question, why we cannot just go to other places, the kid do go to other places, go to other person's backyard, but for this place, we think is the best one, is because it's very open and that they don't have, uh, too many trees, and then so people can play sa- the kid can play safely.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, Steve, may I add, first, um, that's why I want to show a video of our history talent show, because, I mean, I don't think you can achieve that in your, just staying along, right? That's why there is open theater, that's why I said I want to show the board member, um, sort of a film that kids can play together.
I, I think, I, I'm, I think the, the, the problem is that, you know, we're, we're hearing all this testimony, but I don't, I don't think, um, the witnesses or Ms. Kai understands that w- we need to see certain proofs, um, to be able to base our decision on that. And, you know, we're not, we're not really hearing anything about that. So I, you know, again, seeing a video of neighborhood children enjoying use of the patio is still not, not supporting any of the proofs that we would need to see to, you know, make a decision.
I'm going to ask Ms. Kai if she has any other witnesses.
Uh, yeah, we, I have one, um, I'm not sure if she's on, June Wong.
Did you say June?
Yes.
Hi, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold true, done by the truth?
I do.
Just state your name, your full name and your address, please.
Uh, first name June, last name Wong, W A N G, and my home address, twenty-nine Wellington Avenue, Short Hills.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that twenty-nine what?
Wellington, W E L L I N G T O N Avenue.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ms. Kai, do you want to ask Ms. Wang?
So, uh, June, um, maybe you can explain to the board why the patio is better than a lawn, why children, you know, or the neighbors enjoy a patio more than someone else's backyard with a lawn.
Okay, uh, the lawn is not level, you know, it's, uh, it's easier to trip for the kids when they run around. Uh, the patio is more leveled from my perspective, it's safer. You know, especially when you want to perform an instrument, you want to hold, uh, the, the guitar or you want to sit, uh, uh, a steady level ground so you can perform. Uh, there was like a, a talent show in the Mother's Day celebration, the kids were, the two kids were playing chess, so they, they need a stable platform so they can put the little chair, the two kids can play with each other, compete with each other. I don't think that's feasible, if you put a little chair on the lawn and a small table which is, uh, holding the chessboard, you have to really have a stable platform, that's, that's, I, I'm not an engineer, mechanical engineer, but, uh, I would assume, you know, a patio is much more easier to set up all this, uh, things, furnitures.
Okay. Ms. Kai, does Ms. Wang have anything else to add?
Uh, I live, uh, yeah, I, I, I think, I don't, I don't live too far away, Wellington and, uh, Clermont, uh, intersect each other, so we, uh, my kid and, uh, uh, Eden's kid are, you know, they, they were both of the fourth grader, last year they were all the third graders. Uh, you know, with all this online learning, uh, all their eyes were really hurt and damaged. Uh, the kids want to social, to be, you know, mentally healthy as well. Uh, her backyard is the gathering place for all the kids of the same age, and you know, they did play chess together, they read books, there's a book club that, uh, Eden's daughter organized during the summertime. Uh, so it's the, uh, platform for kids to social, to study together, to play together. It's, uh, it's really one of the best, uh, patio I've seen.
Are there any questions of this witness by board members?
Yeah, I'll ask one quick one, so before the pandemic, where'd all the neighborhood kids play?
There was no gathering, at least I don't see big gatherings, people probably, of course, they go to center court, there's so many venues in the neighborhood, they can go. And everybody's busy with their own, uh, it's really pandemic of all this, uh, activity, there's no after school, there's no really basketball, uh, basketball, uh, basket, or, or, or any, any sports.
Joe, can you mute yourself, I'm hearing a lot of background, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so a lot, a lot of the sports, a lot of all these venues were shut down or closed, even the gyms were closed, so really the kids have no other place during the pandemic.
Question, then also, so, you know, in addition to concerts, the other things like that, is this also used for sporting activity as well?
They, they play Gaga and, uh, you know, if you count, you know, kids play Gaga, and sometimes they play basketball as well there, yeah. And sometimes they play basketball as well there. Yeah.
Any other witnesses? Any other witnesses, Ms. Kai?
That's it for tonight. I have more, but I keep on, I mean, all night still.
So so Ms. Kay, if if Ms. Wang, well, first of all, is there any other questions for Ms. Wang? Um, Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, why don't we open it up to the public for questions of any of the witnesses for Ms. Kay? To the extent that they haven't had, the public has not had a chance to ask any questions of the witnesses.
So are there questions of any of these witnesses from the public? Any members of the public? Eileen, are you seeing any hands up?
No hands.
No hands. All right, I, it's Ms. Kai, anything more you need to say?
Okay, so no hands, right?
No, no, I just had a hand raised by Ann Spector. Are we taking questions from the audience or state?
Questions for any of the witnesses, yes. For any other witnesses?
All right, I'll see what the question she has.
Can you hear me?
Yes, did you have a question for the witness?
Uh, just the comment, we're neighbors at 12 Clermont Drive, it's just, just the comments.
Okay. Are we there yet, Mr. Simon? Or?
Um, I think.
We should go into comments at this point.
See him.
We need to see you so you can just.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, hold truth, know the truth?
Yes.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my legal name is Arthur Hausman, although I go by Len and my wife Ann Spector. And we live at 12 Clermont Drive.
Is Ms. Spector going to be providing some testimony too? Because I don't know if she was sworn. No.
No.
Thank you for clarifying that. What's your address again? I'm sorry.
12 Clermont Drive.
Please proceed, Mr. Hausman.
Yeah, first, it's been a great neighbor. It's been wonderful to have her. And we like her a lot and we hope we can maintain good, good relationship. You know, in terms of the patio, she has planted trees so that there is not as much of a visual blight as there would have been otherwise. But I'm planting trees.
Wait, wait, Mr. Hausman, I'm sorry, your connection, you gotta stop. Your connection's kind of spotty. I want you to go back a couple of sentences because I think we didn't, the board and the public did not hear everything that you were saying.
Okay, can you hear me clearly right now?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think Ms. Kai was thoughtful in planting trees along the fence so that the blight of the patio would not be too much and shielded the sightline to some degree. So we we appreciated that. But I recall that when the patio was being constructed, it did seem to be rather large. And and we actually took a look at it with with Eden and I said, oh, you have a permit for this, I'm sure. She said, yes, absolutely, I do. And then the patio continued to be built. And actually, I wasn't aware just how large it was till today when we went online and we saw the original permit that was granted. And then the the way it actually ended up being built. And it appeared to be three times as large as the original. So on the one hand, it really doesn't bother us that patio was there. Maybe from one window, I see the additional part, but mostly it's not a visual problem at all. But I I was just so surprised that that it was three times as large as the permit had granted. That was, so that's my only comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions of this witness? From the board members from the audience?
Steve?
Uh, did you say that it was light from the patio? Is that what you said? Did you say you saw light from the patio? Sir? Mr. Spector?
Mr. Hausman? Mr. Hausman is asking you a question.
I hear you. Can you hear me now? Barely, sort of. Try it again. Did you, did you say that you saw light, L I G H T, light from the patio? Blight. No, no, that she minimized the blight, B L I H T, B L I. She minimized it by planting the trees, which we are thankful for. Thank you. Yes.
Any other questions from board members or from the audience of Mr. Spector? I thank you, Spector. Uh, the applicant still here?
Yeah.
Ms. Kai, do you have anything more to say?
Um, I just want to thank you for everyone's time and the questions. Um, so I said the history about the patio and I, again, I apologize for lack of zoning knowledge. But I do feel the patio service, cultural sports event for, you know, host a place for the children and keep children safe. So I hope that the board will consider really bring the benefit to the community.
Joe, you're muted. Joe, you're muted. Thanks.
I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting now and ask board members if they have any comments they would like to make.
Can I say something, Joe, before we, before we get into comments? I just want to remind the board that in terms of this application, there are three variances that are requested of the applicant. This is not an undersized lot case. The lots conforming as to lot area, lot width. So this would, I would argue, if the board's going to consider the application, it'd be considered under the flexible C2 standard. And let me just remind the board that the applicant would need to demonstrate who has the burden of proof that purposes of zoning is set forth in the Miss Palanius Law are met by this application. And then also that there is no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighbors or neighborhood and no substantial impairment of the master plan and zoning ordinance. And finally, there's a balancing test to determine if on balance the benefits outweigh the detriments. And there's a case called the Kaufman case that basically states that to prevail on a C2 application, the applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate that the proposal provides a better zoning alternative for the property than what the zoning ordinance provides.
Thank you, counsel. All right, board members, this is the time for you to comment on this application. I'll take the step of the of going first. I went to see this property and frankly, I was totally shocked when I walked into the backyard and saw the extent to which this patio has taken over that entire property. I want to point out to you that we are not talking about a minor case here. We're talking about, for example, accessory structure occupying area no greater than 20% of the graveyard area. This patio occupies 35%. Not not quite twice, but almost twice what is permitted. My view of this case is that if we, and the same is true, by the way, with the side yard setbacks and the graveyard setbacks. This is my case where we're talking about a foot or two here or there. We're talking about a massive destruction of the backyard of of the natural attributes of the backyard. And when I, as I said before, when I went to see this property, the only thought I had that was going through my mind was that if we grant this variance and the next guy comes along with a similar variance, we would find it hard to say no. And we would render the provisions of the ordinance meaningless in my judgment. So I think this is too much. And although I think that Ms. Mrs. Kai has good intentions, had good intentions here. Basically, I am troubled by the fact that a permit was issued and this, what was built is more than twice the size of the permit that was issued, a backyard patio that was shown in the original drawing. I'm not saying that any of this is Mrs. Kai's fault. We're not here to determine fault. We're here to determine whether or not this board should grant these variances, which are, in my judgment, enormous. So I would vote no and reject this application. Now, I'm going to turn this over to anyone else on the board who would like to comment one way or the other on this application. Yes, Craig.
So in regards to the proofs, I already stated by, could you mute yourself, Joe? You're getting a ton of feedback. Thank you. In regards to the proofs, so as our counsel already mentioned, as a C1 variance, we clearly have no hardship here as it is a conforming lot all the way around. So as for the C2, I I heard really no testimony tonight regarding any of the proofs. So as far as I'm concerned, there's been no compelling testimony to show any reason why we would grant this variance. Uh, we have accessory side door setback, accessory structure in the backyard and maximum accessory use coverage. So as it pertains to the C2, I do feel this would be very detrimental to the zoning plan as this type of coverage in a backyard is is certainly not advantageous to zoning and would be detrimental to the master plan. Uh, I am still also baffled by the permit that was applied for versus what we see in the backyard and how it got there seems by magic and just a really generous contractor. Though that does not justify what was done. And if the permit was originally applied for for the 12 by 16 patio, that's what I expect to see in the backyard, not what there is today. So under no circumstance would I approve this variance request.
Is there anyone else on the board who has a comment here she would like to make?
Yeah, I I agree with Craig. I also would would like to just, you know, say that, you know, as we all know, the variances run with the land. So, you know, we we heard a lot of testimony tonight from the applicant's witnesses saying how, you know, this kind of personally benefits them, their kids, you know, the neighborhood. But I mean, that's not to say that the next group of neighbors that move in would feel the same way. So if we were to grant this variance for this enormous patio, you know, it's it's there, it's there for, you know, forever unless someone chooses to take it down. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the board who would like to speak to this? I hear none and I see none. Is there a motion in this case?
Deny.
Okay.
I'll move to deny.
There's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Craig Clotner?
Yes.
Shari Sharma?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you say yes?
Yes.
Joyce Seagull?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Chitouris?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Steinberg?
Yes. This application has been denied. I think that the agenda tonight is very short. So I wish you all a happy holiday, but we'll see you in two weeks before the holiday on the 20th of December. There are cases, right, Eileen?
Yes, there are. And I'll have a preliminary calendar for next year. You guys can take a look at it. We can prove it at the first meeting.
Thank you. Is there, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone who has a matter to bring before the board that has not been listed on the agenda. I hear none, I see none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Michelle, hands.
Motion granted to adjourn.
Motion is granted. The meeting is adjourned.
Okay.